And the Oscar goes to Hair Love, Matthew A. Cherry and Karen Murphy-Colliver.
Hair Love is a story about, you know, loving yourself, no matter what type of hair you have, either curly, straight, no hair at all.
I think that people have spoken. People need to see themselves on screen. Hollywood has to answer their call and make these movies for everyone.
It's my honor to present the 2020 Academy Award winners for the best animated short film, Hair Love. So we're just excited to celebrate Black history, Black culture, and the trials and tribulations of hair.
Okay, so what do I have to do now?
First, you have to take out the ponytail.
Take out the ponytail.
Inspired by seeing viral videos on the internet featuring Black fathers tackling the seemingly daunting task of styling their daughter's hair.
Are you ready to do this?
We really was done with representation in mind, to have young people be able to see themselves in animation.
The images that we're creating are actually helping change the world. I realized this was an opportunity to really present positive images of Black men.
Did anyone else notice that this is the second year in a row that an Oscar-winning animated film featured people of color? I'm gonna call that progress. Well done, you guys. L.A. City Council members take a stand for the rainforests. USC celebrates International Women's Day, and it's time to salute historically Black colleges and universities. All this next on City Beat.
The annual Historic Black College and University Day celebration took place in city council, allowing city workers to show pride in their alma maters.
There was no healthcare available in South L.A., so they founded Martin Luther King Hospital and Charles R. Drew University to train physicians and train residents so that there would be care available in that community.
The USC Marshall School of Business will present its International Women's Day Celebration 2020. The summit seeks to gain insights and practical paths forward toward equity and diversity through panel discussions and workshops addressing issues affecting women in the workplace. L.A. City Council members announced the imminent passage of a motion and a resolution condemning the Brazilian government. The motion calls for divesting L.A. City from corporations profiting from the destruction of the Amazon rainforest and the violence against indigenous people who are fighting to protect it. Oscar winner Joaquin Phoenix and recording artist Moby attended with representatives from environmental protection groups.
Remember, meat and dairy production's causing climate change and deforestation, and there's no way around that. Thank you.
It wouldn't be African-American Heritage Month without celebrating the many artist activists who've paved the way. Well, this year at the Nate Holden Performing Arts Center, they're paying tribute to the one and only Billie Holiday.
I am so honored to do this work here in this theater bearing the name of Nate Holden. I was born 150 yards from the front door of this theater. So as a child, I navigated my way to play with friends, to have a hamburger, to get my haircut, to go to grammar school and middle school with all of my siblings, and to return in a role of cultural leadership here at the Nate Holden Performing Arts Center is a complete joy for me.
It means a dream come true. When I became councilman of this district, we had a viatic neighborhood showcase, and the earthquake took it away, and it hadn't been replaced. And so I got a lot of help from my dear friend, President Bill Clinton. I got to have some money so we could rebuild this theater, and that's what we've done.
I want to say that we are very proud to be here in our community and to produce theater that represents African-Americans in real life.
After all the help I gave her opening her kitchen and all of that, and she said, "No."
I believe that this theater is what's needed in Los Angeles. I mean, first of all, it's named after Nate Holden. I love the fact that it's not a theater that's in a different neighborhood, that might be more melanated, less melanated than this one. I love the fact that it is reaching out to this community and making art happen.
And be sure to stick around for our feature later in the program, where we had the pleasure of interviewing the productions director, Ren T. Brown, and former state senator Nate Holden himself. Celebrating African-American heritage is far from over in Los Angeles. In Freedom Hall at Forest Lawn, Afrocentric Art and Culture were the touchstones for a night of unity and community.
What we are doing this evening is coming out to celebrate Black History Month.
And we're gonna have an amazing show tonight. We're gonna have musicians, singers, we're gonna have speakers, comedians, dancers, and this is one of the most beautiful events that Harlem did first for the community.
Right here for this particular event, we brought out some art to be sure that we understand what is happening in our history. This particular piece that is here really gives an understanding of some very powerful men, Black men, that have been very inspirational to our entire world. Only the African-American culture comes to see an African-American event. They were not spreading the culture at the event and the information.
I think we need to open up and cross the cultures and break the boundaries and break these divisions. It just makes this world better and more entertaining. Just like tonight, we get to see all these wonderful people perform, and everybody who's out there sharing their talents with us, no matter what their background is, is so special to all of us, and we need more of that.
This is important, and it represents a great history, and knowing that we can come together for something that's heartfelt, and something that makes us remember that, you know, the past is not so long ago. But it's good to have a lot of performers come together that can communicate and share, and just basically be an entertainment for us to be able to come together, you know, and have a great atmosphere of peace and harmony.
Most people agree that great music transcends race and age and time, but the drum has a special place in African culture. As Rashar Goel reports, there's more than one way to beat a drum.
Lorraine Moreland, a drummer and spoken word artist, shares with us the historic relevance of drums throughout African-American history. She shares how it's been used as a communication tool.
Basically, back in time, there was a lot of wood. So you could use that. You could use the wood. You could make that beat, and then somebody else would make it, and then it goes down, and they could hear it from way yonder, and then it would go, and they would communicate, and that's the way it was.
The slaves used drums as a communication tool during slavery in America, but taking that tool and applying it to today's times, we can use drums to alert people to emergencies that are taking place.
And now there's an idea of how we could use the drum as a tool in present times.
Within our Ready Your L.A. Neighborhood program, we encourage people to come together within their neighborhoods and utilize their resources in terms of preparing for emergencies like earthquakes, fires, and other disasters.
So how can drumming help you? Well, officials tell me that your neighbors are your first source of help during an emergency, before you wait for the firemen or police department to get down there. So what you can do is get together with your neighbors, figure out a sound that works for you, and during an emergency, use that sound as a way to communicate to each other.
While the emergency is going on, someone can just be off to the side beating this drum while people are packing up and getting out. People are telling other people that there's an emergency, telling others that they need to evacuate the area. So a drum can just be the pulse to the emergency that's at hand.
We always have the alarm going off for a fire or something. But can you imagine? You hear that. It gets right there, and people will know that we have a serious problem going on right now, you know, just by hearing that, you know?
Ready Your L.A. Neighborhood is a program by the city's Emergency Management Department that helps neighborhoods prepare for emergencies. In addition, the city also has Notify L.A., an emergency alert system you can sign up for.
We send messages through cellphone, email, and your landline, and we will let you know when an emergency happens and what you need to do in terms of the response.
And while those technological tools are being used in our modern world, we can still find a way to be connected through this historic instrument.
We can always count on the library to bring us stories we never knew we would cherish, to provide the tools and knowledge we need to move us forward, and to provide the sacred ground where we can be and express who we are.
You're very clear about being Black, about being Bi, about being Muslim, about being all of your various different identities altogether.
Yeah, it's great, because it can be really exhausting to perform one version of yourself.
This community is extremely diverse. It's about 55% Latino and 45% Black. And one of my primary jobs is to bring programming to this community that reflects the community.
Being Black and being queer are not things that are separate from each other, not something that have just converged in recent times, not a trend. It's something that is inherent to both Blackness and queer identity.
To be Black is to be queer is to be trans is to be all of this all at once, and it does not in any way kind of undo or detract from your Blackness to allow queer and trans people to also, you know, embrace their Blackness as well.
You mentioned folks from the Harlem Renaissance earlier. Like, I remember learning about them. I remember reading their poems and their plays, but no one ever told me that they were queer.
Yeah.
Or Bi or Gay or whatever the case may be.
It's like, is it activism or is it just telling the historical record as it was? I feel like that's a question that I'm constantly thinking about.
The Harlem Renaissance was a time of cultural explosion in the United States. It was this convergence of people, Black people from a bunch of different areas, from the South, from the Caribbean, from Central and South America, coming together and forming a new and unique identity. As they were doing that, they were also questioning what it meant to be a man or a woman, and also the gray area in between, or the vibrancy in between, and that laid the groundwork for the work that's being done today.
I think one thing that's very important for us today is to make sure that we create the world that we want instead of just complaining about it.
Well, today, we are very honored to have two extremely influential individuals in the history of our city, former state senator and city council member Nate Holden and Ren T. Brown, an award-winning performer of stage and screen. Thank you both for joining us.
It's my pleasure to be here.
It's my pleasure.
Yes, now, we want to talk about all the amazing and exciting performances and things that are happening at the Performing Arts Center.
Presently, we have one week left. We're presenting a play called Lady Day at Emerson's Bar and Grill, about one of the last performances in the life of the great Billie Holiday. So following that, we're gonna have the two-time Tony nominee Vivian Reed doing a tribute to Lena Horne. Then the wonderful, wonderful dance company, the Garth Fagan Dance Company, he gave the world the Lion King. I mean, literally, gave the world the Lion King. And then a Philip Hayes Dean play in May called The Stye of the Blind Pig.
Let's talk about the importance of having theater in communities of color.
It reminded me when I was a kid, if I went to the movie, and I didn't see any people of color in the movie, sometime the butler, the chauffeur, the maid, it said to the community and to the general public, that's what you do. You're the butler, and you're the maid, and you're the chauffeur, and that's it.
Often, the narrative is written by the dominant culture, and the narrative is often poorly written about communities of color. And so when you can see yourself as whole, when you can walk into a theater, and you can see a play where your mother or your grandmother or one of your siblings is represented, there is a kinship immediately. There is an understanding immediately, and it's vitally important, because when you're able to see yourself as whole, then you're able to exit that theater chamber and to treat someone with another kind of intentional civility. You feel better about being a human being.
Would you like to add to that?
It generates pride. That's very important.
That's right.
Where do we find more information? Join thousands who are running from Dodger Stadium to the sea. Watch Outfest Fusion burst with diversity. Or join Councilmember Buscaino for a day of planting trees. All this and things to do.
It's the largest marathon held in California, the fourth largest in the country, and the seventh largest in the world. The 2020 L.A. Marathon offers a run that passes every major landmark, from Dodger Stadium to the Santa Monica Pier. Entertainment centers located throughout the course will reflect the ethnic and cultural diversity of the city. The 2020 L.A. Marathon happens Sunday, March 8. For details, visit lamarathon.com. Don't miss Outfest Fusion, a festival of international film, music, and storytelling focused on people of color. Discover breakthrough works from today's most exciting underground artists, musicians, and creators. Outfest Fusion begins Wednesday, March 6. For more information, visit outfest.org/fusion2020. Celebrate and plant trees this Arbor Day. Join Councilmember Joe Buscaino, Cal Fire, LADWP, and Cleaner Greener East L.A. for a day of climate and community action. The goal is to plant 300 new trees in Wilmington, surrounding the Banning Museum and Recreation Center. Following the volunteer tree planting, city plants and partners will host an environmental community fair with food, music, hands-on exhibits, and more. 2020 Arbor Day Celebration happens Saturday, March 7. For more information on this free event, visit their listing on Eventbrite. And that's a look at some things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Saieda Pagan. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. This Week.
Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is March 3, and this council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfeld, Bonner, Buscaino, Sadio, Harris Dawson, Weiser, Coetz, Krikorian, Lee, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Eleven members present and a quorum. Madam President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Rodriguez moves, and Mr. Rue seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Blumenfeld moves, and Mr. Harris Dawson seconds, next.
Today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Mr. Lee, would you like to lead us on our pledge of allegiance?
And everybody, please place the flag, put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, members, let's go through the agenda. Madam Clerk, let's go ahead.
Madam President, there is a request to continue Item 1A for 30 days to April 1.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order next.
Items 1 through 9 are items noted for public hearing.
Do we have any cards on these items?
There are cards on 1, 8, and 9. Items 2 through 7 are available for council to vote on.
Okay, let's go ahead and take up those items. Members, are there any specials on any of these? Okay, let's get prepared to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next item.
And Madam President, those items will be held over to March 17 unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
Very well. Next item.
Items 10 through 18 are items for which public hearings have been held. There are requests for members to hold items 16 and 18 on the desk.
Ms. Rodriguez?
I'd like to move to adopt the Public Safety Committee recommendations.
Very well. Any other specials, members? Let's go ahead and vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, what's next?
Madam President, Items 19 through 45 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, these items are now before us. Members, are there any specials on any of these items? Any cards, Madam Clerk?
Yes, there are cards on Items 27 through 45.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the remaining items.
And that would be on Items 19 through 26.
Okay, correct. Go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, what's next?
Fourth with on 15, please.
Okay, what's next?
There is a request to send Item 15 forthwith.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order.
And then for the record, the ordinances on Items 19 through 25 will be held over to March 17th unless reconsidered with the twelve members.
Okay, Madam Clerk, this being the request to continue Item 39 until Tuesday of next week. So it's council releases next week, so the following Tuesday?
And that would be to March 17th. And Madam President, that then takes council back to items called special, presentations, or general public comment.
Mr. Price, are you ready?
Thank you, Madam President. My colleague and I are excited about introducing someone who really needs no introduction. We're honoring today Mr. Frank Bush. He has served as a General Manager of the L.A. Department of Building and Safety for the past several years. Before becoming General Manager, Frank began his career as an inspector and promoted through the ranks to his current position. On March 27th, he will be retiring from his role as General Manager of the L.A. Department of Building and Safety. Frank is highly respected by the construction and development industries as well as the LADBS family and the greater city family. Frank has over thirty years, thirty years of experience with the city of L.A., and he's been in, had an extensive forty-one career in the construction and the development industry. In 2018, he received the 27, 2017, 2018 Building Official of the Year Award from the California Building Officials Organization, and he received the Excellence in Public Safety Award from the International Code Council. As General Manager, Frank is responsible for managing all of LADBS operations, which includes over a thousand employees, engineers, inspectors, managers, and support staff. To say the least, Frank is a change manager. He cultivates ideas from staff and customers as well as his own and helps turn them into tangible improvements. As you can see from his resume, he's a larger-than-life professional. But more importantly, he's overseeing catalytic and historical projects. In my district alone, Frank has helped bring more than $2 billion in improvements to life. He's played an integral role in overseeing numerous projects, including the L.A. Football Club Bank of California Stadium, the L.A. Memorial Coliseum renovation, and the Lucas Museum of Narrative Art currently under construction. These projects have and will continue to provide my community and the greater city of L.A. to continue to enjoy sporting events, concerts, they will enjoy paintings, photography, illustrations, cinematic art, and digital art from the Lucas personal collection, along with the Star Wars exhibit. If it wasn't for his work, dedication, and diligence, these projects wouldn't be here today. With all this, the city family is greatly appreciative to Frank for his service. However, you know, once a member of the family, always a member of the family. Your legacy, Frank, will live on for generations to come. We wish him well in retirement, and we know we will be seeing him around. And for some additional comments, my colleague, Mr. Bloomberg.
Bloomberg, I like that. I, I, give me the sixty billion dollars and I'll keep my name to that. Thank you, Mr. Price. So it's, you know, we've served in the family, we've known each other a lot, it's all good. So today, thank you, Mr. Price, for bringing this together today to honor Frank Bush and allowing me to be part of it. Frank is literally someone who has, you know, people talk about you've shaped the landscape of a city, they usually mean figuratively. With Frank, it is both figurative and literal, all you have done to shape what this city looks like and the great city that it is. He's been with the city, as you mentioned, over thirty years, since I graduated, the day I graduated college, he started here. And, but he has an important distinction as a General Manager that maybe not everyone here appreciates as much as I do, but he is the only General Manager that lives in the 3rd District. And I am very grateful for that. And, and he not only lives in the 3rd District, he has been and is an integral part of the community, as well as being part of this city family and the city, what makes it to get, you know, he has been part of this city. He even ran for City Council, not against me, prior to that, back in 01. And he has been just a part of the community. He, before joining the city, he was a licensed contractor, he worked in the area, he got to know everyone. And over his time, he has received numerous awards for dedication to public service, improving departmental efficiency, resolving community blight. And as I mentioned, he's, he comes to my holiday party every year, is always part of that. I get to see him in action, both here in the city, but what he does on his personal time, he is dedicated to the schools, to the community. He's an outstanding supporter of Reseda Charter High School's football team, the Regents, who just walked away with the Division One champions. He joined me at the latest presentation honoring this amazing team. When he's not cheering on the sidelines, he's coaching, coaching Little League Baseball at Reseda Park, along with our GM, Ramon Barajas. In fact, he started coaching baseball and football back in eighty-eight with our rec leagues, before he ever even worked for the city. And he has been doing that kind of community work ever since. In fact, with Reseda High School, his connection goes so deep, he actually was one of the founders of the Booster Club for Reseda High School back in eighty-seven. So he has been there for the community, both locally and citywide, and I know that you will continue to be there, even though we're saying goodbye to some extent as, as our General Manager. I know that you're going to still be, I'm going to still see you in Reseda all the time and your lovely wife Judy, and you're going to be part of the West Valley and you're going to be part of this city, as you have been. And just, I wanted to express my gratitude for all that you've done for this city and to honor you on your retirement. So congratulations, Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomberg. Frank?
Council members, we have a couple of members on the queue, would you like to, would you call on them first? Before Mr. Frank speaks? Mr. Corretts, followed by Mr. Lee and Ms. Rodriguez.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bloomberg and Mr. Price, for putting this forward. I just wanted to say that Frank, you have what is generally considered to be a thankless job, so I wanted to be one of the people that actually thanks you for doing your thankless job. You're not only well-respected by developers, you are well-respected by the community, by my office, and we really appreciate how responsive you've been in the time you've been in this position and before. It doesn't matter how small or large a project is, if it's important enough for us to call you, you respond almost instantly. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate that and how much I'm disappointed that you are retiring before I am. I was hoping you'd be here for the last three years. You've been a huge resource and we really rely on you in, in my office and throughout the city, and you will be very much missed in the terrific role that you've played.
Mr. Lee?
Frank, I don't think there's a General Manager that I call more. You take my call at any time of day, night, weekends. But I also, you know, have a personal relationship with you. We serve on the Dona Chappell's Youth Board together for many years. You've been a constant attendee at so many of our different functions, at like the YMCA Booster Dinner. I honestly thought that you were at so many of our events, I honestly thought that you lived in the 12th District. And you've just been somebody that understands building and safety and the department at every single level, and you are going to be such an incredibly hard person to replace. I want to thank you for all your years of service. I'm very upset that I just got elected and you are already leaving, but, you know, I really appreciate the friendship, I really appreciate everything that you've done for this city. So thank you, Frank.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, colleagues, for bringing in, I think, one of our most prized possessions of our family here in the city of Los Angeles. Frank, you have been a really outstanding team member for those of us that rely so heavily on making sure that projects continue to make headway in our districts, to make all the improvements that we want in our city. And I just want to thank you for your example of leadership. You have been just tireless, and, but I think what I appreciate most about you is I can always count on a very honest answer. And that level of candor and can-do spirit is something that so often we miss in our positions that with individuals that don't want to give us the hard truth. I always respected you for giving us the hard truth, and I, you are going to be sorely missed. I want to thank you for your years of friendship. I, you know, when I think back about how, you know, as a young staffer and then becoming a member of this body, I could just always count on you and so many members from the Department of Building and Safety for your support in helping us do the jobs that we were elected to do here. So I want to thank you so much for your example of leadership, for I know mentoring so many members of the department, that I know your leadership will forever continue in this department because you made it better and you've made an indelible mark here. So thank you, and I just, I appreciate you so much, and we are definitely going to miss you, but we know that your legacy will remain forever. So congratulations on your retirement, my friend. We wish you all the very best and health. And congratulations to your family for getting a little bit more of your time. I mean, your extracurricular activities, I know, continue to still take you to baseball games and coaching, but just thank you for everything that you've done for the city of Los Angeles. We appreciate you immensely. Congratulations.
Mr. Krikorian, followed by Mr. Rue.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Frank, this is a, a day that I wasn't looking forward to, like all of us. Certainly, you've earned it, but we are really going to miss you. As my colleagues have described, you've been not only the consummate leader of this department, one of our finest General Managers in the time that, in the decade that I've served on this council, but you've also been such a contributor to this community, as everybody has talked about, as my colleagues have talked about this. The service that you do outside of work has been a real tribute to you as well. And just today, we're going to be voting on the ordinance to allow our Homes for Families project to be built. I know how important veteran housing is to you and how much you've devoted to that organization, and today, we're going to be moving forward on that project. And as, as we look, it's, it's examples like that, that as you go into retirement, you'll be able to see your legacy stamped on this city indelibly. You'll be able to drive to every corner of the city and see the development that's happened because of you, and the, the landscape that's been changed of the city for the better because of you. So you'll see it in the buildings that, that you drive past. You'll see it also in lives that have been saved, people you don't even know, have never met. But this is a public safety department. Building and safety keeps people alive, and there are generations of Angelenos ahead of you that, whose lives depend on the work that you've done and the leadership that you've shown. And then your legacy will also be stamped on this city in the men and women who are standing behind you right now, because the department leadership that you have mentored and brought along means that while we're going to miss you, we're going to have a department that is, that goes in a different direction because of you. There have been several mayors now who've tried to ensure that the development departments work better together to be able to create jobs and create economic activity while still preserving their core mission. And it's been a hard task for mayors to achieve that through organizational restructuring and so on. You've done it through personal leadership. You've built the relationship between this department and the other departments in a way that allows us to ensure that we're keeping people safe while also ensuring that we have the most robust economy that we've had in decades, with foreign direct investment continuing to pour into this city, with construction going on, with housing being built, with jobs being created because of you. So this is going to, your position is going to be very difficult to fill, although I know it will be, and very ably. But you personally, Frank, will be missed by all of us and by all of the people of Los Angeles. So thank you and congratulations on your retirement.
Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Councilmember Price and Blumenfeld, for bringing Frank today. And, you know, and I told your wife and your family, I'm one of the ones who call you on weekends and on evenings when you're off work, but I think that's a testament of your accessibility, and that's why it's so great whenever, how big or how small the problem is, we could go directly to you. And honestly, it's not just now as the Director, you were, you were the go-to person back when you were the chief, when you were the Chief of the Department, where whatever the issue was, all the hard, hot-button issues, we used to go to you to ask, solve. And as Councilmember Krikorian said, many of the issues were multi-jurisdictional, and it's because of your depth of experience and your relationships throughout all the different departments where you're able to solve these complex cases. So we, we are very sad to see you go, but, you know, like everyone else, you deserve a retirement as well, and I know your family's very ecstatic about that. But thank you so much for your service to the city of L.A., and thank you to our Councilmember for bringing you up today. Thanks.
Mr. Sadio?
Just briefly, because almost everything's been said, I just want to say thank you. You're the consummate public servant, and you're a very dear friend. When we got, when I first came to the city, obviously, I didn't know anything about how the city worked, and there were a lot of challenges that, that transitioned, realized, but you were always a person for us to go to. And once you were part of one of our projects, part of one of our efforts, we knew it would be successful, and so I just want to say thank you. You're, you're a great friend. I didn't realize the depth and the extent of your civic engagement, of your community service, so you deserve a break, although I'm not quite sure you're going to take it. Pretty sure you're not going to take it, but you deserve it nonetheless, and it's just, I just stand to say thank you. You're a real public servant, and you are the, the consummate public servant and the role model for what it means to, to serve the public and serve the people. So God bless you and good luck.
Thank you, and Frank, I just want to say, please don't go. No, I'm serious. I think you are definitely one of the hardest-working men I've ever had the pleasure of working with. I talked to Jim Dantona the other day, he said to say hello. He says it's great to be out of this building, he loves it, and sends his best, but in all, honestly, thank you on behalf of my staff for always, 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 always answering the phone call, always making sure that our constituents had a real representation within your department. So you're going to be definitely missed and incredibly, incredibly difficult to replace. Good luck, my friend. Back to you guys.
Ladies and gentlemen, let me present Frank and Judy Bush.
The first thing that comes to mind is, wow, thank you very much. I really appreciate that. It's been a great career here in the department. I'm going to have more time to do the civic duties that, out in the community, as you have mentioned this morning, I appreciate that. But I really have to take a couple of But I really have to take a couple of moments and thank my rock right here. My wife's been a big part, you know, a lot of times, she's been here a couple of times. We've been here for events and council, but a lot of recognition needs to go to her, too. She's been a very hard-working individual for a number of years and take care of our children and, you know, our 12 grandchildren we get to spend more time together with now, and who knows if that's going to grow. But she's, you know, I want to acknowledge her for all the things she's done to support me over the years, and she's a big part of my success in my life. And also, to mention, you know, she took care of our moms until their passing in our home, just daily taking care of doing that. And a lot of people say, you know, wow, it's incredible what she's done. You know, it is. It's a big deal. That's a big deal if you've not had to do that, to deal with a relative that's ill and for a number of years, and I appreciate her for all of that. And it, the Department of Building and Safety is in a great place. The Department of Building and Safety has some outstanding individuals working in every field that we have there. The management team, all the way down to the person that greets you at the door when you come in to get a permit, or you go for an inspection, or you go for, you get a visit from a code enforcement inspector. But it, you know, the staff is great there. It's outstanding, and I can't, I've been proud and very humbled to be the leader for that for the last three years. This city, I would encourage anybody that's listening to my words here today, is to go for it and try to just expand your knowledge and your reach in the community, in your job that you're doing here in the city. I never, ever, one time thought, when I came to work here as an inspector, to inspect the construction on buildings, thought that I would be the general manager of the department. But, you know, it's, I have to say, you know, and give all the credit to that, you know, the Lord Jesus has blessed my life without any question. I have beautiful children, beautiful family, and almost 42 years ago, when I accepted him and made him my life and started to follow him, things changed and just turned my life around. And I encourage everybody to really take a moment and think about that. Think about the way your life is and reflect on it and try to improve, and to reach out and to work in the communities and everywhere. And again, I could be here all day long, but I just want to say thank you, and I appreciate everybody, your jobs here. As mentioned earlier, I did lose my mind for a short period of time in 2001 and ran for city council. I got that out of me and put my feet to the ground and kept moving on, but I've got my mind back. But I know, I appreciate the job that you all do right here and the responsibilities that you have in your communities and in the city, and I appreciate, I've always appreciated that, and especially your staff members, because as hardworking, a lot of times, they don't get the recognition and those kind of things, and I try to do that with my staff in Building and Safety. Every time we're talking about building and safety, it's a reflection, not of me, it's a reflection on the staff and everybody that is here. So, again, I thank you, and I wish God's blessings on everybody here today. Thank you.
On behalf of our council and a grateful city family, we just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and vote on reconsiderations on items two through seven. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, those items are now before us. Go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, let's also vote on reconsideration on items nineteen to twenty-five. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those items are now before us. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go into multiple speaker cards. Mr. Previn, followed by Arnold Sacks and Patricia McAllister.
Mr. Previn, you're speaking on item number one, eight and nine, twenty-nine through thirty-nine, forty-three through forty-five, and general public comment.
Well, first of all, let me just say thank you to Mr. Bush for his tenure as the head of the Department of Building and Family Services.
So, why don't we save that for general public comment? Move on to the items.
Well, I'm going to go right into the liens, which is the area where the Building and Safety is doing their best work. Now, unfortunately, that work involves going out and, you know, citing people. We have a regular public speaker who is convinced that in Krikorian's district, the Building and Safety Department is not just a little corrupt, but a lot corrupt. He's concerned that they're, you know, citing people and then penalizing people and coming after people. Now, you know, I can't research all of these things, but I can just say that Frank Bush is a decent guy, but he's decent because, as you all jumped up and said.
So, again, why don't we save that for the, no, that's not about liens.
Well, the liens are about building and safety, sir. You want to dispute that, or you want to interrupt and litigate why you're interrupting a public speaker?
Mr. Previn, get onto the items you signed up to speak on, or I'm just going to move you on to general public comment.
It's very bad. Okay, fine. So, let's move on to the other items. Fair enough. Boy, it's a rough, rough room. Now, I'm not going to talk about the liability accounts, because those are in the section marked "No Talkee."
Good, so let's not, and go on to the items that you signed up for, Mr. Previn.
You're trying to get through. It's a long, it's a 45-item agenda, and you've got it.
This is your last warning, Mr. Previn.
Lighting districts are illuminating the fact that you're sitting on my microphone, Madam President.
Okay, you're again off-topic. I suggest we send Mr. Previn to general public comment.
All right, let's just go ahead and move on to general public comment. You have one minute.
All right, today's March 3rd election day, and we're waiting, Councilmember Martinez, for you to submit your matching fund request to the Ethics Commission, so that you will have spent the entire election preparing, but then you'll collect $151,000 of public money, even though you've swamped the other people in your race in fundraising, as has David Rue, who's collecting $151,000, and both of his challengers from Rich CD4. Krikorian's going to get the, he's already up to 70-something, and John Lee's up to $100,000. These are incumbents getting matching money. That was not our intention. By lowering the threshold, Mr. Bonn, to $11,400, 100 people in district, it's worked perfectly. Everybody upstairs in the incumbency is getting the money, and a few of the already-established politicos connected to either the big Democratic Party are getting big endorsements, who can raise a lot of money because they have organizations. It's disgusting. It's beyond belief. The public financing in this community should be coming forward sooner rather than later, and Councilmember Martinez, we're going to be watching with a magnifying glass as you greedily gobble down $151,000 out of the public piggy bank.
Thank you so much, Mr. Previn. Arnold Sacks?
Followed by Patricia McAllister. Mr. Sacks, you're speaking on items one, twenty-nine, thirty-nine, forty, and general public comment.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. So, if you have a lien that's been put up against your property, I suggest you contact your council office or your neighborhood council office and find out about RAC. Rent Act, it's a committee that meets to discuss liens against, that are against properties. It's through the HICDLA, and they have meetings once a month or once every two weeks or something like that, and you should go to it and attend, just so you can get some information that you can use to help you fight the lien against your property. The city council and the city doesn't want to use any of their excess funds or their council funds to help you with your property, so the best way to do that is try to go in there with a little bit more information that would help you out. Item forty refers to charter bus service, and I think Metro should get involved in this. You know, they're just doing a next-gen bus study instead of doing a next-gen transportation study. There's a big difference between the two. Next-gen transportation refers to transportation throughout the city, bus, rail, auto, underground maybe, even Uber, Lyft. They, there's somebody that's going to consider flying Uber, vehicles that actually fly like they did in Total Recall, flying taxis, not included. You know, Madam Chair, there's a lot of conversation going on. Why don't you?
So, could we get back on the agenda?
Mr. City Attorney, this is for you.
Thanks, Mr. Sacks.
You're very welcome. And then, item four, or item thirty-nine refers to a motion by Mr. Harris and Mr. Dawson changing Caesar Chavez Day to Caribbean Heritage Month. I believe this should have been done when the city council and the budget committee were in meetings to discuss the yearly budget for the city. All these line items are included in the city budget. This was done back in April. This is an item that should have been brought up then. To go ahead and do this now is disingenuous and racist, if you want to ask me, to change a day into a month. You have funds in your council districts, Mr. Price and Mr. Harris-Dawson. Use those funds for this item, or you should have brought it up in the next city council budget. How many days has the city celebrated Caribbean Heritage Day or month in the past 10 years? And how many times has the city celebrated Caesar Chavez Day in the last 10 years? Do the math.
Is one minute?
General public comment, right? Thank you. So, you have a great panther here fighting for civil rights, against hate language, and against stupid city council and county activity. I've been coming to these meetings. I've attended almost 1,500 meetings in the years that I've come here. I have a pretty good idea of what happens in the city council and the county. I have some pretty good ideas of how to change some things. By the way, today, Metro is free, Dash is free, subways are free for voting day. You're supposed to vote. Oh, shoot. You know, I had an apple and some limes with me? Damn it, I forgot to bring them up here. For coronavirus, limes for coronavirus, lime for Corona beer, green apples, don't confuse the two. And if you're seeing my picture around, it's because I'm on the internet. Whatever crime has been committed, I've done it.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Next speaker, Patricia McAllister. Ms. McAllister, are you in the room? She doesn't appear to be here, Mr. Quam. Rob? Rob, you're speaking on items twenty-eight through thirty, item thirty-three, and general public comment.
Thank you. Items twenty-nine and twenty-three to deal with detention centers for minors. I do think it's worth noting that this ends after the election. It's worth noting that Obama was the deporter-in-chief, and depending upon who our Democratic nominee is, we might not see a whole lot of change in our immigration practices at a federal level. Item thirty-three deals with a street banner program with shops on Third Street. That's all fine and dandy, but again, I just wonder what this city's doing to help get out the vote. There was a municipal reform commission that compiled a number of recommendations on what we could do with street banner programs, with bus stops, and none of that stuff's happening. You know, I would also note right now, there's a lot of chatter, and I know that after you get yelled at a lot, it's a little tough, but it'd be nice to have some focus. Item twenty-eight deals with supportive housing, and I do want to talk about what a numbered address means to someone. It's a point of contact. It helps them get a job. It also helps them get civically engaged, enable their rights. You might have seen in the Daily News yesterday that there are a number of people in Los Angeles that are being disenfranchised from their ability to vote in local races. The specific issue is people that are registering to vote same day and are using cross streets to register to vote are not being pulled up as in a precinct. I'm talking about the unhoused and their ability to weigh in on civic engagement.
So, I think that's more general public comment, if you get back on the item.
All right, well, you want to talk about supportive housing. Building supportive housing in the city is extremely difficult when we have people fanning the flames of NIMBYism. This is a mailer that went out this summer.
Hold on, Rob. Are you, do you want to go on to your general public comment, because you're not speaking on any item?
I'm speaking about supportive housing and how sending out mailers talking about nightmares on the streets and rats undermines our ability to build supportive housing. I just don't understand how, you know, we'll go to general public comment to give the city attorney some pause.
All right. Let's go ahead and give him his one minute.
I hope you actually really do hear me. Out here, there are people in this city who are not being given votes, ballots to vote in local elections. It requires somebody from the registrar's office getting a phone call from the vote center to connect them through. This is a big problem, and I think it's also a really big problem that last week, we had some really awful stuff go out in the mail. This was in particular regards to District 12. You know, I always cut you some slack, Councilmember Lee, because you really didn't seem to enjoy being a council member under Lee, unlike Councilmember Englander. You seemed committed to public service, but sending out mailers calling your opponent an extremist in the most unfair way possible does nothing to bring us forward. I have 35 copies, so you can all look at what your colleague is sending out. This undermines our ability to do anything to build supportive housing. You wonder why you have NIMBYs here. Your colleague is fanning the flames and gaslighting this city.
Thank you, Mr. Quam. Next speaker, Mike Greenspan, are you here? Is that a yes? So, Mike, you're speaking on items one, eight through nine, twenty-seven through forty-five, and general public comment.
Yes. Mike Greenspan, anyone but Wesson today on Election Day? After all, we have, there's several items on this that talk about transferring from various depart, from one thing to another, and the things that we're transferring have, it's like comparing apples to oranges. And every time I talk about transferring money from the UCLA football budget to homeless support services, boo on you. I'm giving an example, okay? Thank you.
Please connect it up.
Mike, don't yell into the microphone. Just connect what you're saying to the items you signed up to speak on.
I did.
Do not yell into the microphone. Thank you.
After all, some people just can't read. Anyway, the point I'm trying to make is let's transfer money from where it's not doing good to where we can, especially since a previous speaker just talked about supportive housing. We don't all live in nice fancy condos in Pasadena like Fobble. After all, now, talking about street lighting. It took five months, but we finally got some streetlights repaired in my neighborhood, in Mr. Krikorian's district. Hey, that's not bad. Of course, that's what happens with street lighting on metal poles. You put the streetlights on a wooden pole, you call up DWP, and in a day, it's replaced. So, now, the liens. I have no use for the liens, but I don't see any reason to F-bomb the liens, not at all. I figure, I've tried to clean up the liens. How can I describe the liens? They do the Fobble. They suck a dick. That's the best way to describe the liens. They do the O'Farrell. They suck a dick. Or Herb Wesson III. They suck a dick. That's the best description of those liens. After all, some of us think money grows on trees. People like Coretta's running for city control, let's just go pick money off the trees and pay for the liens. Just go to Coretta's district. Every yard has a money tree in it for you to pick. And now, we have such things as a memory for Kobe. I'm sorry, he's in a better place now, but we sure don't need to have, you know, I've had, we've had enough of it. Yes, rest in peace. We don't all live in nice fancy condos in Pasadena like Fobble. After all, now, talking about street lighting. It took five months, but we finally got some streetlights repaired in my neighborhood in Mr. Krikorian's district. Hey, that's not bad. Of course, that's what happens with street lighting on metal poles. You put the streetlights on a wooden pole, you call up DWP, and in a day it's replaced. So now, the liens. I have no use for the liens, but I don't see any reason to F-bomb the liens, not at all. I figure, I've tried to clean up the liens. How can I describe the liens? They do the Fobble, they suck a dick. That's the best way to describe the liens. They do the O'Farrell, they suck a dick. Or Herb Wesson III, they suck a dick. That's the best description of those liens. After all, some of us think money grows on trees. People like Coretta's running for city control, let's just go pick money off the trees and pay for the liens. Just go to Coretta's district. Every yard has a money tree in it for you to pick. And now we have such things as a memory for Kobe. I'm sorry, he's in a better place now, but we sure don't need to have, you know, I've had, we've had enough of it. Yes, rest in peace. He's here, you know, he's not dead, his flesh body is dead, but if Herb could teach religion better, he'd know that his soul is not dead. Now, we have a few other things. The Anti-Defamation League holding something here. Why don't they hold it at the Jewish Country Clubs? Okay, so they won't hold it at the Jonathan Club, they won't hold it at Tebow's Timoquana Country Club, but there are plenty of places for them to hold things. And remember, folks, fuck Debbie Kim, wetback girl.
No, no, no. Mr. Greenspan, come on.
Free speech. Now, today is Election Day. Anybody but Wesson. And as you see, that's the absent council member because he's too busy trying to get another job instead of doing the job he has. Oh, he's done a great job on the homeless issue. That's why his son, Donny, is homeless. After all, he's done a great job. We'll be able to go to Fifty Five Hundred Sunset and get more liquor. Mr. B-O-O-Z-E, the preacher pushing liquor. And after all, don't vape, kids. Remember David Rue's Dog and Pony Show? Dog, pony, dog, pony. But adults like Herb Wesson take fifteen thousand dollars from Juul because this broad named Vanessa who used to work for Herb now works for Juul. So I find it hypocritical, and after all, I just get real tired of these things. And continuing, thank you.
Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and vote on item number twenty-seven. Let's open the row. Close the row and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen eyes.
Let's vote on items twenty-nine through thirty-five. Let's open the row. Close the row and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen eyes.
Let's vote on items thirty-six through forty-one. Open the row. Close the row and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen eyes.
Now let's vote on items forty-two through forty-five. Let's open the row. Close the row and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen eyes.
Madam Clerk, let's vote on item twenty-eight. Let's open the row, close the row and tabulate the vote. Let's note that Mr. Greenspan just interrupted our meeting as he was exiting our council chambers. Mr. O'Farrell?
Twenty-seven and twenty-eight, fourth with, please.
Hold on, we're just in the middle of voting on twenty-eight.
Oh, I thought you did.
Let's open the row, close the row and tabulate the votes.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, items twenty-seven and twenty-eight, fourth with for Mr. O'Farrell. There's also been a request to send items twenty-nine and thirty, fourth with. Let's vote on item eight through nine. Let's open the row. Close the row and tabulate the votes. Okay, Madam Clerk, there is, let's move on to item eighteen. There is an amendment that's been circulated, is that correct?
That is correct. Amending motion eighteen A.
Okay, Mr. Previn, you signed up to speak on item eighteen as amended? Mr. Previn, are you speaking on eighteen? It's posted. What's on the board, Mr. Previn?
Well, it hasn't been circulated. Would you like to share, read it out loud?
No.
No, it's been on the board.
When it's timed, if he's going to speak on the item.
Yeah, it's the good food zones. I took note that when you were discussing another kind of zone up in Budget and Finance, you referenced it, and I signed up today because I thought that you were going to amend it, but I haven't seen the amendment. Do you want to share the amendment? No. You want to have me expend my time without the amendment? Okay, so this will be an example of what we do on a regular basis. A VAC, pin something up on the wall, as you've been doing for the last four or five meetings, and you know I've made a claim about those things because it's not the proper way to go. And for the record in Budget and Finance, you also tried to settle a lawsuit yesterday for the changing the rules so that these kinds of--
Mr. Previn, you're not speaking on item eighteen.
I know, guys, I know you're trying desperately to wipe it out and clean up the mess, and nobody noticed that you violate the Brown Act all the time, but you do. And this is an example.
Okay, you're not speaking on the item.
You know, I'm happy to participate.
Your time is up.
No, I'm happy to participate so you can get your--
Your time is up, Mr. Previn. You're not speaking on this item.
No, I am speaking. And by the way, Council President Martinez, you ought to go to school and learn--
There are no more speakers on this item. Mr. Previn, your time is up. I need you to sit down.
Well, it's very bad.
You're interrupting this meeting. Sargent, can you ask Mr. Previn to his seat? If not, I'm going to have him escorted out. Okay, there are no more items on item eighteen. Let's go ahead and open the row. Close the row and tabulate the votes. Madam Clerk, let's move on to item number one. We have speakers on this. Item Roxy Wilson, are you here? Item, you want to come on up, ma'am? Followed by Alma Holland and Denise Moses. Ma'am, are you speaking on item number one E? Is that what you're interested, okay, go ahead.
Good morning. Madam President, I'm requesting today a continuance because I did not see that I had a date with you today until this past Friday night when I returned home. You had left a, a notice was left on my property there. And so I'm asking for a continuance so I can find out why I'm here and what I can do about it.
Okay, ma'am, I'm just gonna, we're gonna consult with the council office, continue it to answer. Thirty days, okay. We're going to continue your item IE for thirty days, which is until April first, ma'am. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir, ma'am. Do you want to come on up? Ms. Holland?
Yes, I'm here on behalf of my friend, who's a disabled senior citizen, who is trying to obey the codes of the city. And I would like for some support from the City Council District Nine to help her understand what they have coded her on. I have tried to Google what the codes were on the notice that was posted on her fence, and I could not get any information detailing in English where a layperson could understand what has been posted for her. And so I think that I'm looking at the other items that are on your list for safety and everything, and hers is the highest amount there. And I would like to see a detailed explanation of why it's so high and what they're coding her on and what she needs to do to fix whatever has been cited. Okay? And so that's my appeal for my friend. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Hi, good morning. I'm Denise Moses, and I'm also here to appeal for my friend, Roxy Wilson. And I'm requesting or appealing that once all the fees have been assessed and the code violations rectified, that those building and safety inspection fees be waived because she is a senior citizen. And, you know, things happen in life, and she's disabled. And in fact, she's been trying to get a, her, a blue handicap parking color code painted on her in front of her house for the past five or six years, and to no avail. So we're here in support of her to ask and appeal that those fees be waived. And, you know, again, things do happen in life, and all you have to do here, really, all of us, just walk out of the City Hall, the walls of the City Hall, and we see the homeless people lined up on the sidewalks, in front of businesses, in front of residences to know that things do happen.
Thank you, ma'am. This item's been continued for thirty days. I'm going to have someone from Council District Nine speak to. Ms. Wilson, this gentleman right here will speak to you. Thank you for coming down, okay? Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and vote on the remaining balance of item number one.
And Madam President, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that one D also be continued for thirty days to April one.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. What's next?
The department also recommends that one A and one F be received and filed in as much as the fees have been paid, and the remaining items, the liens, can be confirmed.
Okay. Let's go ahead and vote on the remaining balance of item number one. Let's open the row. Close the row and tabulate the votes. Let's move on to item sixteen, Mr. Krikorian. Go ahead and vote on item sixteen. Let's open the row. Close the row and tabulate the votes. If I call your name, please come up to the podium to speak. This is general public comment, you have one minute. John Scudder?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want to come on up? Crystal Sanchez? If I call your name, please come on up. Crystal Sanchez, are you here? Tony Q? Tony Q, are you here? Tony Addy? Come on up. Mr. Scudder, go ahead.
Just one second, ma'am. I was in a meeting right here. So, good morning, John Scudder, Coffee Express in the House. Last week I brought my coffee cart to the courthouse to sell coffee and invite everybody here at the council to come down. I only got some assistance from Krikorian to come down, thank you, but I still haven't received any phone calls. Madam Secretary, I implore you to please come talk with me. I listened to your speech last week about how you rode subways to learn how to make stuff safer. I implore you to come talk to me as a street vendor so that I can talk to you about the problems with the new vending law and the inclusions that need to be included or exceptions that need to be written into the law for veterans. Because we have two contradicting documents between Public Works and the City Office down here at Finance with the issues, my veteran's city license, which right on it states I can vend, and I have the exception from the state of California that states my seller's permit, we can vend. But now you're saying we have to pay to vend even though we are excluded. Please come talk.
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you, sir. Go ahead and give them to the sergeant. Is there Tony Q in the room? No Tony Q? Was that you, Tony Addy? Okay. Miss Sanchez, you want to come on up? Good morning.
Hi, my name is Crystal Sanchez. Oh, thank you. I work in the hookah sector, and I also work with lounges in this area. Although I am worried about the hookah exemption and what it means for me and my job, I'm here to talk about the lounges that are operated and owned in this area. Most of them work at night, they start around 4:00 PM and work until the early mornings. That's why you don't see many of them here today to speak. Tony, luckily, he was able to pick up early in the morning and come join me. But I just want to say one thing this morning is that everyone I speak with in this industry is confused and scared. They're confused because they don't understand why this is happening to them, even though this is a situation where the vaping industry and the tobacco, the big tobacco industry is, you know--
Thank you, Crystal. Your time is up, thank you. Tony, just give me just one second. Is there anyone here with the initials J-N-E? J-N-E? Terry Reed, are you here? Do you want to come on up? Janet Kim? Is there Janet Kim in the room? Do you want to come on up? Go ahead, Tony. You have one minute of general public comment.
Good morning. My name is Tony Addy, and my company is called Golden Desert. We make premium coconut charcoal for shisha or what do you call, hookah. I do coconut charcoal, which has a lower environmental impact than regular charcoal. I'm based in Baldwin Park, but my customers are mostly in LA area, in downtown and around it, and in California in general. I'm a big hookah enthusiast as well. It's really nothing like cigarettes and Juul. Anyone who think it is, does not understand it at all. Anyway, I want to say that flavor ban is a hookah ban. Hookah is a flavor. Hookah was originally made by soaking tobacco in honey and adding some grated fruit. It is a flavored product. All other tobacco are products, are mostly unflavored, but they are all more popular than hookah. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Reed, followed by Janet Kim. Bliss?
I will pass.
Terry Reed, you're going to--
Excuse me, I will pass because there's only one minute available.
Yeah, it's only one minute for general public comment?
Yes.
You're not speaking? Okay. Next speaker, Janet Kim.
Hello, good morning. My name is Janet Kim. I'm a owner of a hookah source in Northridge. It's a hookah bar. I'm currently worried about my business. I hear there's a proposal to ban me from transferring it or selling it. It has no value in the case. I've been, I've put sixteen years into this business. Every small business depends on the value of the asset they built. If I can't pass it on, it has no value, even for a loan. I also hear that I can be fined if a customer drinks so much as a bottle of water in my lounge. I strongly recommend a different approach. I ID everyone who comes into my lounge. I think anybody should be shut down who doesn't do that. And I think it's a very good idea to have people scan IDs with a third-party ID scanner at the door, not waiting until they walk into the business. I think that is the best approach, not a flavor hookah ban and not making life impossible for small business. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, ma'am. That concludes speakers for general public comment. Madam Clerk, is there anything else?
Counsel has motions for posting a referral.
First, members, are there any announcements? CNN, can we all rise, including members of our public, for adjourning motions? Mr. Price?
Thank you, Madam President. Members, I rise to adjourn in the memory of Mr. Levi Kingston Jr., who was a prominent community activist within South LA for over fifty years. Mr. Kingston was responsible for establishing the Hoover Intergenerational Care, Inc., a nonprofit organization which provides childcare services for low and moderate-income families. Over a forty-year span, the intergenerational care facility has offered early education to thousands of children from diverse ethnic backgrounds. They're based on a philosophy that advocates the integration and involvement of seniors in the provision of classroom instruction and enrichment activities. Additionally, Mr. Kingston prioritized the Hoover exposition, Hoover Park area, which included attending the Board of Directors' meetings for the California Science Center, where he presented public comment related to various critical issues impacting entities in the Expo Park area. He was also known to utilize the facilities of the museums in Expo Park, such as the California African American Museum, the California Science Center, and a natural history museum. In addition to his impressive resume, Mr. Kingston served as the chief executive officer of the Community Consortium, a nonprofit organization. He advocated public awareness and community outreach in the areas of AIDS, education, and prevention. During the nineteen eighty-four Olympics, Mr. Kingston spearheaded the development of public information targeting community residents describing neighborhood changes to be expected during the Olympics and the competition results. As an advocate of cross-cultural awareness, Mr. Kingston coordinated numerous events throughout the community and the SC's campus, where he once served as the USC Community Advisory Council, providing input-- Advisory Council, providing input to former USC President Stephen Sample. During his extensive career, Mister Kingston has received numerous commendations and awards. A wall placard with his name can be found on the Jefferson, can be found on Jefferson Boulevard near the corner of Vermont by the SC campus. Mister Kingston accomplished all these things before passing at the age of eighty years young. May he rest in peace.
Mr. Price, are there any adjourned motions to my right? Mister Krikorian?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President. Uh, members, I'd like to ask that we adjourn this meeting in memory of Herbert Martin Piken. Uh, Mister Piken was a prominent business leader in the Studio City area, um, and he really lived, uh, a life that was a, the American dream. He started off as a, in New Jersey, as a vacuum salesman for the Kirby Vacuum Company, and rose from those humble beginnings to become what columnist Al Martinez of the Daily News would, uh, would call the king of Ventura Boulevard. Uh, he was responsible for developing some of the most important shopping centers in the South Valley, uh, including the, um, uh, center at Coldwater, which contains the Bistro Garden, and the Studio City Plaza at Laurel Canyon in Ventura. And he was a very prominent developer of, of shopping centers in the Pacoim area as well during the nineteen eighties, at a time when other developers were not really making those investments. Uh, but Herb saw the opportunity both for, uh, development and for community enrichment and, and empowerment. So, he was able to, um, to really uplift the, those communities as well with his development. Um, he and his wife Marilyn moved to the San Fernando Valley in nineteen sixty-three. Uh, they lived in Tarzana and then in Studio City, uh, and when he passed away recently at the age of ninety-four, uh, he left a, a great legacy, not only of his work, but also the relationships that he'd built throughout, uh, that lifetime. Uh, many of the tenants that he had in his buildings had such a close relationship to him that they personally mourned his loss. Many of them were in tears when, uh, when they heard of his passing, and, and it's a real, it's a real loss to our community, but he left a great legacy as well. Uh, Herbert Martin Piken is survived by his wife Marilyn, to whom he was married for over sixty years, uh, his sons Harry and Robert, and his sister Joan Silbersher. May Herbert Mark, Martin Piken rest in peace.
Thank you, Mister Krikorian. Any adjourned motions to my left? Mister Coretta?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, I'd like to adjourn this morning's meeting in memory of Nick Charles Adams, who passed away on December sixteenth, twenty nineteen, at age sixty-eight, and his beautiful Mountain Paradise Pine Mountain Club, where he moved seven years ago. We've lost a dedicated public servant and a loving husband, father, grandfather, uncle, and brother, whose enduring goodwill and lifelong engagement with family, friends, and community earned him the respect and admiration of all those fortunate enough to have known him. And my wife Gail and I consider ourselves blessed to have had the privilege of knowing Nick through his loving wife Shuri, who is Gail's good friend and former colleague in Council Member Joel Wax's office. Uh, Nick was a native Californian and the son of Charles and Josephine Adams. He was born on June fourth, nineteen fifty-one, in Chatsworth, where he grew up on a beautiful ranch near scenic Stony Point. He was an intrepid entrepreneur, began his working career establishing his own flooring business, which he operated until he joined the City of Los Angeles General Services Department. He possessed abundant mechanical building, decorating, and restorative skills, and he used them to excel as a dedicated public servant over an outstanding twenty-three and a half years in the city family. In addition to working in GST, he also worked in various capacities assisting the LAPD and LAFD, as well as the mayor's office and city council offices. And since moving to Pine Mountain Club with his wife Shuri, Nick applied his many skills and passions for driving, fixing, and customizing cars and other vehicles as well, as well as restoring furniture, gardening, and decorating his home. Nick was widely known for his beautiful smile, wit, and devotion to family. He leaves to cherish his memory, his beloved wife Shuri of nearly thirty years, his children Eric, Charles, Nicole, his grandchildren Jet, Madison, Carly, Spencer, Kyra, Kiana, and Carter, his sisters Rose and Phyllis, his nieces Tiffany, Desiree, and Karen, and his nephews Fred and Mark. And may he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mister Coretta. Any other adjourned motions, members? Our meeting is adjourned.